Today is my day, October the 14th, 2019. In the Potter County Council. Today we have Bill Williams with the county fellowship. We want to our in locations, if you please stand and we may stand.
I thank the Father, we thank you for a beautiful day, glorious day. And we thank you for all the purposes that you have for this group to be assembled here today. We thank you for our city, Potter County, for its leadership. And today, Lord, we present ourselves to you and we tell you that we need you and we ask for your wisdom. We pray for courage. We pray, God, that all things will be decided today according to your will. In the name of your son. Amen.
To the freedom and to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
First thing on the agenda is recognition of amendments from the section 2029, the new commissioners' call. Hello, so we're replying to budget amendments from the suit, consider life on budget amendment to the disclosure of 29.
Just a question in terms of the general operating for the IT, the 84,000 increase, what express this?
This is an item that didn't get only, did not get covered from previous year as the funds issue.
I make a motion that we improve the budget, budget amendments as presented.
Sorry.
Number three vouchers to consider next from the simple of the payment of vouchers process that we can now address office from here in section number 18 to October 9th, 2019. Keep in mind the amount is four, so it's six from three weeks. Check numbers 187663 for 187970. NY transfers 1293 for 1303. The amount of $4,025,000 is going to be seven cents.
As noted on the county debt, there has been two approved working checks and wire transfers in the amount of $4,025,000, seven cents.
A few questions that I may judge. Page 15 of 52. Check number 187818, custom gardens around 6,400, outdoor flooring replacement.
This area is what's called a yard garden.
Outside the state of they building, people's school. Okay.
And that's, it was leaning into the building and a fisher would carry, we had some fun set aside that were set aside to do the flooring, whether it be out in the outside or you know, whatever, called the house, just people to know that it was kind of a little bit long. So we put one inch aggregate all around it and it's a serious gap, it just up against the building. So the margins, it doesn't stand, we go up against the building, but it kind of goes down to the ground.
That looks good.
That's, that's what that is.
Um, did we, have we used custom gardens before?
Yes. They did the custom, the, of the bars.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, second question, page 28 of 52. Check number 187923, Royal Architect Products, it's about 7,400. Fire and Rescue, is that tied to the new fire station build?
No, that's a we're changing our door locks over to key card access. Uh, we had one of them stationed six, the locks that come apart on the building anyway. We started changing over a couple of years ago. Hopefully in the near future, all of them will be key card access.
Okay, thank you very much. One last question, Judge. Page 34 of 52. Uh, IT, check number 187965, it looks like 27,500. Westex Chill Water Specialist.
That's probably first, who learned in a room?
It's the new IT member.
Yes, the leader, you know, okay. Thank you very much, thank you Judge.
Uh, number four insurance reports, recognize the insurance number before.
Hey, did you, did you want to give a couple of dates about the EDA transition? Just so we're all aware, I know there were issues with some of the cards and prescriptions. We have bid numbers on there.
The, we have had a few issues, the prescription bid number was not on the initial cards. Uh, I, I do know that at least some folks have received new cards with bid numbers on them this weekend. I'm not sure if everyone got them or just some, uh, so we are making headway. Um, we've had a few concerns with some of the providers and we are working through those issues. Um, specifically, we're working with an issue with urgent care. This morning and I should be hearing something early this week from John here, Martin, um, about that. So, um, you know, we have had a few snags. Um, right now, we're working with an issue, we've had several folks who have tried to, attempted to get 90-day bills and for some reason, the prescription coverage is disallowing a 90-day and only allowing a 30-day. We're working through those issues. So, um, we're getting there even though it hasn't been without issue.
Yeah, and I know some of the cards came through without the dependence on it, the dependence.
That was, that was the first card that came through. Um, they uploaded the wrong E-list. And so there were some, some that had, uh, dependence that were not covered on the card and some that had dependence that should have been on the card, not on the card. And so that first card was scrapped and, and we had a second card that came out. Uh, but it was also without the RXP and like I said, this third card has come out this weekend. So hopefully we have third. Yeah.
So for the, for the department heads and elected officials, for their employees, um, just make sure they're using the latest card, that that's what actually goes in their wallet or their vehicle. Because I can see where that would be coming from.
Right.
So what was the issue with urgent care, you said?
Um, that there was not adequate coverage for urgent care and then someone used the urgent care and was dissatisfied with the service and the quality of the facility.
That would be quite sexy. And I, and I called K and said, we've got to do better for employees. So I think it's good because we, um, we obviously were accessing this healthcare in our new, um, our new coverage. And so we all have to have our hat on to make.
So you're saying that, that particular infrastructure was not satisfactory or internal carried in carry?
Um, no, I think of just having options for our employees to pick where they would like to get their care done, right? Our previous carrier, we had a couple of options. Um, why that matters for an employee is you can get co-pay versus your deductible. If you have to go to the ER and obviously we want to keep people out of the ER, those are probably really high in flames. Uh, so I think it's just working through some of that. But since there was some commotion, I thought it was worth at least bringing them to the court about the cards and making sure employees have the latest card. Because I know quite a few people had to access prescriptions right at the birth of the month.
And, and we worked through that. We had the RXP numbers that we were providing employees before the cards came out. And so folks were able to get prescriptions filled, it just took an extra step initially. Um, and it's my understanding on the urgent care issue, there's a second urgent care that is, um, being added to our, um, network. And they're looking at some other possibilities as well.
So was this, was this information passed on to the hospital?
To the urgent care? Yes, they, that issue has been addressed with the facility and they're working through those issues.
And we are, uh, we are transmitting that post-concerned information to all our employees in respect to the callers that may need.
We have, uh, put out emails to all employees, letting them know that the cards that came out were inadequate, you didn't have that RXP and that the third card should be worth coming in to be watching for that card. And like I say, it's my understanding that, that at least a portion of those cards were received this weekend.
So just something to be aware of, I mean, I think some of that is to be expected as a transition. But I know we're, those in the room are often the ones that get the questions on that process.
Going brains. We're too good on brain.
We're.
I think that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny, thank you. From the bottom, it's on to the update. Morning, morning.
Good morning.
Okay.
For Judge, for your information, thanks for letting us speak today. Uh, a few updates, we have a lot of projects, um, ongoing. Uh, the new firewall is not completely in place and we completely removed the old firewall. For a while, while we completed the new firewall, we had those in place. That's, that's completely done. All of the sheriff's office staff have gone through the in-person cybersecurity training. So thanks to sheriff and chief for getting that scheduled. They all went through them last week and I think they did really well.
What is feedback, as people go through that training? It's an hour long, if I remember right?
About an hour, yeah.
It was, it was good.
It was good.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've changed that training as I've gone through the different departments too, just to, uh, as I've gotten feedback. So, yeah, I think they've been moving.
My thing, I learned is that there is a, a state law that was passed this last day, just mentioned, says all county employees and elected officials have to go through a cybersecurity training, starting in 2020.
Yeah, and, and more and more industries are starting to do that. So we have folks that we cover who fall under different regulations, um, like IFRS and HIPAA. And they're required to do that too. Uh, and so this is, I hope to have the in-person training finished up, um, pretty soon. Uh, just have a few more parks to go and then we'll implement the online.
Is that a one-time training or an annual?
So the in-person, I would love to do an annual, and briefly why is because as, uh, old employees go and new employees come, I think they need to be trained as well. So I'd love to do that. I think it's important.
Old employees, yeah.
One of the scary things about that, that, that needed education is that, uh, there's only five people there, or five groups that they approve to get the training. So I was thinking, need to work with TAC and see if, sure the guys are approved.
Sure.
If we're not, and wherever we can, yeah, that's what we need.
That is interesting. Would you pass along that bill over, Commissioner?
Yeah, we'll take a little bit.
Yeah, just, that would be interesting.
Uh, we're continuing to go to the county, the computer, to make sure that all the systems have the requirements on the necessary software. And we're also ensuring the old software that should have been removed is, is done. So we're continuing to upgrade notebooks that have those ten, to kind of those. Uh, on the development, uh, front, Steedware developer is successfully going by the code and test environment for the old share system to prepare for January 1, in case some folks are not able to run the target. Because there are some changes like, uh, the good finding is going to be wrong. And there has another change to select a prep January 11. Uh, we are actively replacing and upgrading the network switches throughout the county. Those were purchased, uh, four years ago and those are being deployed. We have a plan to convert one of the old courthouse to a modern network in one of the Juilliard areas, um, the, the north side. Right now, it's pseudo-cable, uh, the devices are capable to a switch, but the switch is capable to an access point which goes to an access point. So we're going to work with, uh, maybe some equipment.
It was, it was snagging, I guess.
It's just, I mean, it just, you know. It's just how the courthouse wasn't wired.
So we'd like for this area to kind of be our first
Test.
first of concept, test area and we'll still have to get some feedback. I think we'll get discussed in our next meeting. Details are at the store a part, but now we've got a plan for how we can run cables and get everything in place. So now I think that next step, and then we do it.
Julie's always been a good teammate. She loves softwares.
Hopefully then we won't watch of that. And finally, project wise, I'm really pleased to say the BX rail is finally up and we have successfully transferred some test data. And now we're going to move some, uh, production machines over and we hope to have that transition.
The BX?
Yeah, BX rail, that's a backup server.
That's the backup server?
Yep.
Okay, okay. That, is that the one that was originally slated for the LEC?
Yes, we.
So you're saying you've got some over some test data, it's looking good?
It looks great, yeah, it's finally out. The firmware on, on all the nodes has been updated, the operating systems have been updated, everything is green, good. Um, and knowledge transfer has been done with the vendor. Test data was successful, so, um, we will work with various departments to schedule. It's not supposed to affect business, you know, we, theoretically, we should just be able to move everything over. But.
Well, I know last time you reported some concerns with the actual hardware, that you could actually even use that.
The concern there is that there are hardware issues that we're working through. So there was, I don't know, a handful of issues with the various nodes or just hardware that had failed. So now we've got all of that replaced, that's what we've been doing is, is getting it all up and running, so now all that's taken care of, which run really well. Um, so it's kind of back to the new state, um, and looking all the possible and potentially put it into use. It was individually just been purchased. So this, this will find the hardware issues and, uh, software and firmware dreams from when we were.
Okay. And you still have your offsite backup that, that your team is running?
Yes.
As a secondary, okay.
That'll be in place for a while, while the project is very, very, very comfortable.
Okay.
That's all I have on the table.
Thank you so much.
Right, number six, LEC construction, consider next contract part of the budget, the LEC construction project. The end of the same calendar, reduce for payments on it. There is not here, but is my understanding about 2300, 23, 2.3? Yeah. 2.3 million. Okay, 2.3 million is being moved from that account to.
And that'll be specifically to pay off the LEC budget, to move back to that debt.
Move to, move the transferring fund, then to the construction project, to the second fund, to use for payments to debt.
And I'm rushing 700. Please, Chair, please, sorry, second. The Chair, try again. Number seven, neighborhood planning, financial report for the neighborhood planning projects for the quarter ending six, 12.
So Judge, I was going to have Carrie speak to the financial, but we get this off and so I'm not going to spend too much time on, on that. But I want to focus on is kind of this longer document, because that is something the floor has been asking for, the schedule size, about, um, kind of how to tell where the dollars are allocated and what part of the neighborhood planning. And Commissioner Vaughn joins this task force with me, so Commissioner, please feel free to add to this collaborative effort. But you do see them lumped, this, this was presented to the city council as well, a couple of, um, work sessions. So that the cap, you see North Heights, you see Vadio and you see San Jacinto. The part that I think is, is the most helpful is actually on page two on the back, where it shows you the color codes and the, how the dollars are being used. So there's this light yellow, which is our interoperable dollars. Um, there's this pink, which is the bond that, um, that went for the vote, that did pass on some of these neighborhood planning. Other, and then CIP is the, the city's capital improvement project line item. So I do think it's worth taking some time and, you know, going back to the first page and looking at the colors so you can see whose dollars are kind of spent where. Um, you see in the North Heights in particular, that there's about 6.4 million in terms of expenditures there. A lot of those big ticket items are the Warford project, which, which we know is a couple of years now in. Um, some of the street maintenance, you see a lot of those big capital projects. Where I would say a lot of our dollars are spent is getting these projects started, getting them kind of off the ground. Administrative side, you'll see on the Vadio, um, project, there is a, a lower amount, in my opinion, that is spent there. That is where some of our work session is going to be spent next time. Um, what are those dollars to be allocated? I know one of the big ticket items that's in that neighborhood plan is the street skate work, um, down 10th Street in particular. So as you come out downtown and you head east to really complement the lighting and, um, level out the sidewalk um, around some of the downtown work that's being done to kind of complement that. So I expect a big ticket item to come through to support that part of their neighborhood plan. And then San Jacinto, which some of this falls into, um, precinct Commissioner Kelly. This is about 1.7 million, this one's a little different, they're using a consultant to, to run this one. And the lease goes to this particular plan, so I don't have a lot of detail other than I know it'll be wrapped up by the end of the year, it really does take a little year. Uh, I did attend one of their public meetings and I was shocked at how many people were still there. Um, you know, this launch, what, February, Marchish, if I remember? And the amount of public participation is always amazing to see. The fourth one is East Ridge and you'll see that TBD spring of 2020. So they have hired a neighborhood planner that is leading this for the city. So that's something different that we didn't have at the beginning, right? This was the county taking this to the city, saying, how do we work in our neighborhoods? Specifically talk about some unaddressed items and how do we do that in a collaborative way?
We're very impressed with the, uh, the citizenly engagement throughout the city, throughout the county that is participating and creating interest in the communities and, uh, the city has done a tremendous heavy lift. And we, and we'll continue to do that in the future of the project. So we have a partnership that we're working, very distinguished, working together. And, uh, we've got a, a number of those leaders and always respect the communities that are coaching out there and doing a, a lot of proactive work. So I think the county should be proud of the ladies and gentlemen of the city working together as we improve the, uh, uh, makeup of our city and, uh, leveling up that citizens will be proud of and their participation, that's what's so exciting.
And, um, Councilwoman Powell and Councilwoman Hayes sit on this task force, if you will, so really kind of a balance of the city and the county. And then my final item, which is page two, at the end, you'll see the total, 12.4 million. So when I think about this initiative that the county took, um, and really kudos to the full court because we took 75,000 and we said, we don't know exactly what this is going to look like, but we're looking for a partnership to specifically start to address some of our neighborhoods in Potter County. So that 12.4 million, I do think speaks to the work. Um, and we, of course, see that during our budget, that 75,000 that we allocate, which in my opinion is very nominal for this type of work. So it is something we committed to reporting back to the court and giving everybody kind of a tracker of what's happening where. And the city is the owner of this document. So as we get it updated or as the court wants an update, we're happy to kind of facilitate that.
Right, number eight, Odyssey Software, to consider and act upon migrating the Odyssey software from the enterprise environment to a S, a ABS environment and to request a budget amendment, $91,000 from disminuting funds and the capital projects fund to software maintenance. So currently, our Odyssey environment sits on our, our, our servers here at the county and that's how it was purchased back, oh, three years ago. And even before we had all of our ransomware issues, we had already started talking to Odyssey about trying to move this to, um, SaaS environment, which is initially, they may have to keep me, but which is initially more of a cloud environment. And so we finally got the, we got the quote, it was kind of hard for Tyler to go back and figure out what we currently are doing versus moving this to the cloud. And so this is what they came up with. And initially, whenever he presented it to us, he had forgot to include the judge's addition, which is something we have. So they went ahead and they threw that in, they didn't charge us for the additional, although they are charging us to do this. And, um, and so anyways, this is something, and I think that the IT department is, would be excited or would be for us moving our environment into, into this, this particular cloud or SaaS environment. Um, just to move it off of the, the server to Potter County. There's a lot of work and that goes along with it, there's also a lot of, and we take up tons of sorts and it just increases that.
So maybe this is a question for, um, for Tyler or David. If, if we move this to the cloud, um, which I recognize you, we really felt this when the county went down. So this was a dialogue for a lot of years at this point, right? And then when we went down, it was, where are we with that agreement, uh, moving it to the cloud? It, are we having a redundancy piece, like will some of it stay on the server or is it 100% going to the cloud and none of it resides on our server and there's no backup? What does that look like?
So my understanding, uh, first off is the, the typical way for, for, um, Odyssey to run is it has a, a SaaS model, uh, like, like Randall County. So Potter County was kind of unusual in that respect and, uh, that's taking up 30 servers, that's kind of that one system. And I don't have the figures for the amount of data, but the, um, quote that they sent is supposed to include everything. That includes backup and disaster recovery. So none of that will reside here, the only thing that will reside here is, uh, whatever plans are installed to access it. The data will, and that's standard for central.
Okay, so will that free up 30 servers then? Can we expect a cost saving somewhere down the road or what is that?
I would, I would expect so, um, because if nothing else, we're going to be moving it. We don't have to, but example, the department talked to me this morning before the report about, uh, bringing out a space on December X, Y, Z. So data is always, always ever increasing in that space cost, plus the county to maintain.
So you're saying, um, the 30 servers will still reside in the Potter County umbrella, but instead of purchasing the servers, as you get that offloaded, you may be able to use that space for other departments and?
Correct.
Okay.
One thing I wanted to point out, anytime this kind of thing happens, we do save money over time on infrastructure improvement, but we see increased costs on internet and connectivity to get to that data in the cloud.
Okay, that's going to be my next question.
We're adding faster bandwidth and things like that over time as more and more things go to the cloud. So you replace some of that internal costs with internet costs. And, and also in, uh, sorry, in, in terms of saving the county resources. So these are virtual servers that run on physical servers. And so when we are able to tear those servers down, those virtual servers, those additional resources, memory, storage and CPUs are now available for other things like, uh, making ads and just filming to make that work faster. So we have additional resources to allocate.
Do we feel good about our internet provider? I mean, I'm only speaking from my own personal technology experience. When we go do this in hospitals, if you will, as an example, um, you all of a sudden care about your internet provider. And if it feels slow or you're clicking and it's just spinning, do we feel good about our provider that we can handle moving a department like Julie's? I mean, I think about the traffic in that mine.
Yeah, district clerk.
And district clerk too, one of two biggest traffic areas, that our provider can handle that and we don't need to make any changes there?
So we, do you feel good about the provider or not, David, on speed? So I've already started talking with them about, to know what more speed will cost. Um, the contract is not up yet, um, but it will be up in a few months. So they're typically very willing to be the bandwidth for the price you're paying now to keep you as a customer. So that'll be an option, I haven't heard back from them on, on the auction too, so.
Is it AME?
It's ATM.
18 and 20.
Fiverr option, so. It's a, that's a good solid technology supplier going on for sure and there will be suppliers of it. So as far as that feels, it's good, we just need more. And additionally on that, the county does have what's called a failover WAN, which is a secondary internet connection. So if the primary goes down, the key goes down, we can fail it over to another internet connection. Now, that's something else we need to look at speed wise, because that's really, really good. It's just, man, right now is an emergency backup.
Yeah, I'm just in my mind, thinking Julie's department in particular, on wireless infrastructure, not with enough. not with enough internet speed, moving to the cloud type, you know, to sequence that out so that she has a good experience to move that to the cloud. Because there's things that happen behind the scenes that no one cares about as long as it works like it's supposed to.
So, so from the client's perspective, like if Julie's working at her desk, she's not going to, assuming the internet is, is up and there's not a speed issue, she's not going to notice a difference. Um, having a SaaS model isn't going to detract from performance. Uh, it's, it's still, even what she's using right now is still going through the network of this.
Okay.
So pull, or more back, those we hear from AT&amp;T and Blue Bachelor, but shouldn't hold anything up. It's, it's going to work okay. It's just not going to be what we'd like for it to be performance-wise between the two.
Thank you. And this isn't your budget, Julie?
No, actually, well, it will be in our budget, yes. And so right now to get this taken over is Kerry was able to, um, she was able to find some funding, which is going to come from the, from the capital projects and software maintenance. And we also get, we just paid a maintenance on it. And so we will get some credit for that.
Okay.
And so that's, that's where we're, where she was able to.
Judge, are you good since that comes from capital projects and all that's a fund that you're watching usually, I'm talking about this? Okay. Um, I make a motion that we approve migrating the Odyssey software from an enterprise environment to a SaaS environment. Um, funds to come from capital projects, one in the amount of ninety-one thousand.
Sir.
Motion, second, all in favor of motion. Thank you, thank you. Number nine, County Court, to consider an act on the purchase of Granicus.
Yep.
Granicus Peak Agenda Management Software. Funds are budgeted.
That's the good news. So we had a committee, um, which Commissioner Murgia sat on it with us.
And Judge.
And the judge and Shannon, Stephanie, myself, we had some people for IT involved. And so what we are trying to do is we're, um, we're moving to, it's called the Granicus Peak Agenda Management. And if you would like to actually kind of see it, um, in real time, you can go to the Guadalupe County website and look at their stuff. What this is, is it's moving, um, it's moving us forward in technology as far as like how the agenda is going to be prepped, how the backup items are there. And it, it's pretty awesome in reference to if you're, if you're a person who wants to go actually to the agenda and see the video or the audio that occurred with it, you can actually click on that particular, you know, if you're down in number twelve and you don't want to listen from items one through eleven, then you just click on that particular, click on that particular item and it'll take you straight to that conversation that occurred on that item, which is something that I think that y'all normally go back and do if you're trying to review something or, you know, those kind of things. So it's a, it, it's actually a, it's a pretty, pretty spiffy product. And it will allow, it's going to allow, it's going to have to have some training, but we've got Shannon and myself and Stephanie involved right now and the IT department because they're helping us out a lot with this. And the videos will be in real time, so people can stream on their.
Access that from, uh?
Yes, if you want something to watch in the morning and you're not here, you can actually access it from a real-time basis. And, um, so it does, it does allow for a lot of different things. It, it'll, it's going to look different too. So that's what we're trying to warn everybody. Everything's just going to be a little bit different. And, but it gets, uh, it's going to see.
Yeah, I mean, we, we looked at quite a few options. Um, it will feel different. And I think we've tried this as a court. Well, so I think it depends on how you like to get your information. You like the packet like we've had for years now. I, I don't think that's going away, right Judge? Like you'll have your packet, you like to pick it up and you like to prep. Oh, I'm in line up in turn. It's a project. Um, or, um, it will be electronic for the agenda. And I think the departments, if they need an agenda item, um, Shannon will have it, have kind of a dashboard, a program she works from. So they can request an agenda item, she can look at it, talk to the judge.
It's just a forehand.
Yes, to kind of get the agenda ready. We're not, we're going to keep your paperwork. Uh, but if you want it electronically, I think the most important part is the public side of it, right? That the public will have access to all this information and the backup, um, can choose to watch the video in real time. So we're an active court. Um, people really do watch that and, and like to kind of see this dialogue, which is good. Today, we're at the mercy of YouTube, I think is where our videos, once it's recorded, it goes into, uh, we have a channel, a Potter County channel, and all of our videos reside in YouTube, which is a good in the middle, right? But it's probably not good governance, record-keeping for our videos. So, um, the city, I think, uses this as well, if I remember right, City of Memorillo. But we looked at Guadalupe in particular county.
Yes.
Um, and this was something Julie recommended. You, you met this vendor somewhere or at a conference?
Yes, yeah, I've talked to him for several years, but.
Yeah.
I'm moved to approve the Granicus Peak Agenda Management Software, which funds already been.
Sir.
Motion, and second, all in favor of motion. Thank you. Number ten, Pad Two, to consider an act on the approval of the Randall County, the Randall County, Shannon, with the county. I want to go ahead and.
My friend. Yes, that's what.
No, no, that might have been a wedding.
She liking a pair of glasses? He looked at the.
Randall County, um, we prefer the last local MOE that we give. And we, um, we're waiting that moment out. It's, uh, that takes a part in public safety. It's something that got lost in the shelter in Austin. And I was like, dude, that's not really asking for it. And, um, the current organization's always been auto-burgers that prevention. Except in the first, they changed that to encompass more than just thefts and earthquakes of the field. It was some, uh, getting the title, getting up, pushing up other things we're going to get to now. And so now the problem then is now we do the little crime prevention part. It was changed to, it's our grant. I'm going to change the name of all of it. I mean, y'all need to know that because we now know it will be, you know, be.
Okay. So Randall, I, I know that this is a partnership between the county and the city. Is Randall County new, is this a, that new agreement or have they always done it and we're just renewing it?
Sir.
That's our, okay.
We are locating a pain, parts of one hundred, it's a judicial district. Probably more toward the end of October, I think, is when that property was managed. It happened, not very well between, uh, levels what we're doing. The Luba cast drop through here, through our territory, it'll see some of those counties, like Carson County. So we're looking probably trying to pick up Carson County and profitably, uh, dominate. And, uh, and then maybe Collinsburg County. And then just having still other sheriffs.
Yeah. Right. I make a motion that we approve the Randall County memorandum of understanding with the Panhandle Auto Theft and Burglary Union.
Sir.
Motion, and second, all in favor of motion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good number eleven, Tax Abatement Guidelines, to consider an act on proposed guidelines for assessment and approval of the point of the tax abatement for economic development. Mr. Powell.
Oh, these are guidelines you need to have.
Are these, are these something new?
We've had them before. So, so guidelines. We have a request for, uh, so.
Um, the only, oh, I'm sorry, I can't. Um, the only thing I might add, so I think we renew these guidelines before we consider an amendment, if I remember the steps. If there's a couple of years in between, we renew them. Um, the, my only concern that I've had with this particular agreement is I always feel like it lacks some type of loop back to the county of reporting in particular. A lot of times we're looking at, um, how much payroll is increased? Um, you know, what's the footprint of the property? It's going to be X amount of square footage. And so once we do these agreements, we don't ever hear from them again. This is the short version, right? So most of these agreements, they do have some type of reporting clause, whether it's the end of the year, that ADDC comes back and reports. And so when we did our individual briefing with the new, um, president of ADDC, uh, I did bring this up. And he said that they could easily do that reporting back just to make sure the employee count is what we expected. And they do that for other municipalities. So it's not like we're the only ones asking for this. Yes, yes. Um, he said, it's just a matter of, you know, writing it in and getting, getting in front of the court and putting it on the agenda. So we just don't do these often enough. I think in, in my eight years, it's, we've maybe seen four or five, if I remember correctly. That's the only piece that I think is missing from this particular agreement is some type of reporting back to make sure that that business entity is doing what they said they would do during the abatement kind of discussion.
We can add it to the, uh, F, which is compliance.
That's, yeah.
And G, which is called recapture. Most of these projects are going to be in cooperation with the city, the county, the state. Not many are going to be just county projects. And more than they handle that. But we, there's no problem with that in this.
Okay. They may already have the terminology we can plug in because when I ask that information.
They're already doing it.
Yeah, they're already doing it.
So if the court could approve this agreement subject to the addition of that reporting provision, so that we can hear the tax factor from this.
Okay.
Is there some requirement for a, like, for any of these?
I think it gets printed in the paper, Commissioner Church, if I remember correctly. Yes, if it's a good question.
We have stood for a public hearing already, as did the city, for the request that's pretty early. To authorize that SB then, it's just simple.
Motion on this one.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed guidelines, um, for the tax avoidance for economic development subject to the addition of reporting requirements back to the court.
Sir.
We're to a policy manual to consider an act on a proposed amendment to the vacation leave provisions of the local county and the policy and procedure manual clarifying and superseding amendments approved on seven twenty-two. Um, I misspoke when I did this to begin with and I meant to be five days total. Um, or it came out to be, I can't remember, during the budget process. But, so this what you have in here, Ted, is the current policy, correct?
I think this is what the court intended, but it ended up with some extracting some, some. And this is where it probably would come in.
Do you want, yeah, do you want your original, do you want the original motion?
We do.
You can, why don't you read that, read that out? My original motion was?
So the original motion said, I make a motion that we propose an amendment to the current vacation policy. Twenty to twenty-four years and additional three days, twenty-five to twenty-nine years and additional three days, and thirty years and over, thirty years and over, a total of twenty-five days. I think it sounds pretty darn good myself.
Okay, that's, let's start over.
And what date do you have that, um, motion?
So this will be the resol- twenty-second.
I think, I think it's thirty and over, you should get a freaking bail. Okay, so between twenty and twenty-four years, we add additional three days, okay? That's my proposal. And then twenty-five or over, an additional two days.
On.
On to the additional three, which is twenty-five. Okay, that's my motion.
Um, and no longer doing the thirty or over.
Right. Okay, yeah, just additional five days and after, if you're here thirty years, we just.
Well, hours.
I did the.
Yeah, seven, sorry. You did the three, I did.
Okay. Is that an interim action?
Yes.
No, I thought you said it was that, that was my motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let me see.
So your motion. My motion, my motion is to add, uh, additional three days, um, for service for twenty, for twenty-four years. And then after from twenty-four to twenty-five to beyond is another two days. We're told we're five days additional vacation.
Above what's in this.
Above what's in this.
I believe that Ted has already written the policy.
He's twenty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, he predicted the policy, so he.
We're going to print this right here.
Well, I'm not adding two more days to this.
The backup is.
This is the little proof.
The backup is correct. You restated your motion from July twenty-second.
Exactly, that's right.
I will second the restated motion.
Before you, before you approve that, is it, you're, after twenty years, you're already getting additional, you know, two to three days to make it to the four weeks. So shouldn't it be the three days comes between the twenty-four and, and the twenty-five and thirty? And that way after thirty, then you get that additional two days to make it to five days.
What do we get right now for twenty, twenty-four years?
Uh, well, once you get, once you reach your twenty years, you get four weeks of vacation. So now you're saying instead of four weeks of vacation, at forty, you'll get twenty-three days.
You surpassed the twenty-four.
But you're already getting twenty, uh, two days, I guess.
Well, at years, I've converted this to hours because that's how time clock works. Years twenty to twenty-four was a hundred and sixty hours, which is twenty-one days and eight hours and four weeks. Now it's a hundred and eighty-four hours, which is the additional three days. In that twenty to twenty-four bracket.
But didn't we already get, part of this, when you mentioned twenty years, you've got additional days of twenty years, did you want?
Uh, yes, you increased to a hundred and sixty hours. Twenty days.
From eighteen to twenty.
So that would, that would, you're getting two extra days, the old one, you're getting two extra days at twenty years. The old.
I think, I think we've converbed it in the motion.
What I'm saying is instead of you're given, you're given actually, when you make, when you get twenty, twenty years or whatever, you're actually adding five days to that person. Is that what you want to do? You're adding forty hours for a person that gets twenty years.
No, it was already at a hundred and sixty hours. Now it's a hundred and eighty-four.
At twenty though, we got.
The original, yes.
The original, we got an extra two days once you, uh, to make it four weeks, once you've got your twenty years.
Right. Now it's an extra five.
Now it's an extra five days. And so that's what I'm saying. Is that what you wanted? Or did you want it to be where, because you're already giving them two days to make it four weeks at twenty? And then if they are here another five years, then you give them that other three days. And in the thirty, you give them another two days, which makes that five extra days for the person.
Then go to thirty then. Then go to thirty. Twenty-five plus.
I know, but I'm just, that's what I'm asking. You do it one, but you're, it's, it's not, you're giving five days of twenty and then you're just giving an extra two days of twenty-five.
You're giving them three at, um.
Give them five days of twenty.
It'd be a total of five because they already get two plus three additional, which would be a total of five.
We, we, when we talked about it before, you, we were talking about, um, even their, um, security stuff. You said it was two, three, then you said three, two, then you're going to go another three, two, just the same way we have done it. But now you're done it. You're giving five days after twenty years. So if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Okay.
That's easy.
That's fine.
Yes.
Okay, is everybody good on that?
Okay, is everybody good on that? Everybody good? I have a motion in a second.
Hey, are you good with that? I know you can.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just confused, we wanna make sure that we're giving five day, five additional days at twenty years. From twenty to twenty-four.
No, so twenty to twenty-four is three. And then twenty-five plus is two.
Well, but it's, uh, an additional five over fifteen to nineteen years. It's a total of five additional days, once you surpass nineteen years.
It's an additional five, it's five additional, it's three additional days, in addition to the two that was always.
That was already there for a total of five.
Okay.
Okay.
We need, we need a job, Lord, because I don't believe they understand, it's not.
And so, would it be appropriate, Judge Kay, if you wouldn't mind, we have a motion, we voted on it, could you report back to the next commissioner's court, as we have time to kinda think through that and do the math? And if we need to make some corrections, I don't think we're gonna solve for that in this room.
Well, I'm just saying that, that you was through the whole old system, old policy. You was giving either three days and two days and two days and three days. And so, you're still doing that, but then, and it comes twenty, you're giving five days. I guess you are, you're giving.
I'm trying, I'm trying to reward people for longevity, that's what I'm trying to do. They deserve to get more vacation days, because they've been here longer. So, that's what I'm trying to do. I didn't see the vote.
You voted.
You voted.
Five zero.
But you did amend it too, so.
No, I just asked for a follow-up, I didn't amend the vote. I just asked Kay to just double check the match, make sure we're all good, because I think there's still some dialogue.
Okay, we're good.
And so, when does it go into effect?
October one. Fourteen days ago.
So, can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
Because my office has sent questions with me. And so, if you're already over twenty-five years, like I'm already over twenty-five years, I'm going for the gold medal. So, the additional days, or the three extra at twenty, and then the two at twenty-five, do they accumulate that effective October first?
I don't think what she's asking is, do we accumulate per month?
Correct.
Or do we drop the full extra days?
Because they've already surpassed that.
Because they've already surpassed that.
Yeah, starting October one, the way I'd see it is, from then on, you're gonna get two hundred hours a year.
Okay.
But our, our.
Starting October one, nothing in the rear.
Our approvals approved once a month. So, do we start approving at the higher rate, a monthly approval at a time, or do we drop the full amount of days?
I think you would follow your normal process, you would approve via the month, which is what you do today. I wouldn't imagine this would be a whole separate process.
Okay, you're good?
Can I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right, let's, uh, before we all have some vacations. Number thirteen, equipment purchase, road and bridge, to consider an act upon the approval for purchase of following items. A twenty nineteen caterpillar nine thirty end wheel loader from Wal and Care, purchased under Bible contract, total purchase amount one hundred and ninety-five thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and two cents. And rose, 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 R C T dash three fifty from B Equipment Sales, purchased under Bible contract, total purchase amount sixty-two thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars. Any questions on those?
Would we approve purchase items? You judge.
I have a motion, and second on favor of the judge. Sebastian, once we get our actual equipment, would you send us maybe a picture of each one of those? Um, that room one in particular, because I know that there's, on the back is one of them, that's the wheel loader, I'm assuming?
There's pictures of the room in your back as well. There's two back.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, good.
Yes.
All right, number fourteen, equipment purchase, fire rescue, consider an act upon the approval for purchase of following items supposed to come from the air. M two freightliner pumper, fire truck from Deco, Deco Fire Equipment, purchased under Bible, contract code, purchase amount three hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and one dollars. Fifty-five R three track helmets, eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars, those, fifty-five gore goods. What's it, gore hood?
Same protective hood that you wear in the truck.
Just a horrible name, or, sorry. Uh, five thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars, fifty-five commander leather gloves, four thousand three hundred dollars, sixteen Versace robe coats, Versace robe, Versace coats. With lettering five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight, sixteen Velcro pants, six thousand dollars, sixteen forty-two inch length suspenders, fourteen hundred dollars. All equipment purchased from Deco Fire Equipment, purchased under Bible contract, total purchase amount of forty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And C, fifty-five globe boots, fifty-five globe jackets, fifty-five globe pants, four hundred and nine Scotch line letters, all for the price of one hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and two cents. Richard, you wanna say anything?
Oh, the freightliner, the M two, number eight, that was the replacement truck for the one that was crashed. We got the insurance settlement, we bought the other truck bag, so we'll establish equipment from one to outfit the other. Uh, Rosebauer already has his truck in their final prep for production, so we're hoping to get it within six months.
How much did we, uh, purchase that, uh, back?
We purchased it back for roughly eighty thousand dollars.
And how much did it take from the insurance for that claim?
Rough around two hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay.
Right around that area, so we'll use the rest out of the cab to supplement that.
Okay.
So, the figures in our agenda are the correct ones. I was trying to.
Yeah, the.
Yeah, uh, we initially started with, we originally started with a request for prices for seventy, as we have, second to reduce members, so we reduced it down to what fit within our budget, that we predicted back, this back a year ago, we started planning to do this.
I have a motion that we approve purchasing the fire and rescue items as presented to the court. And a quick question, and then I'll finish my motion, all of this is coming from the cab?
Yes, sir.
One to come.
Except for the truck part, that would be the insurance. No, right, recycling.
I have a motion, and will second all of that question. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Judge.
Our reading on her band.
We lifted her band about a week ago.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, everything was pretty good.
Number fifteen, formal bid, number one one eight nine dash one nine, electric cord maintenance, to consider an act upon a worthy formal bid to the lowest and best respondent.
We actually had two, two bids, um, when I was from Kirkland, and one was from Moore. I included the backup, the price differences, so, uh, more came in quite a bit cheaper. Um, uh, regular labor rates came in cheaper under, uh, material markups as well.
Did you spend a long time having that?
Sixteen years. They know, they know, these buildings are building really well, so I'm comfortable.
Service is still good?
It's not much.
I'm going to approve the formal bid of one one eight nine dash one nine to the lowest best respondent board. Checking.
I have a motion, and will second on favor of the judge.
Number sixteen, unsold auction items, to consider an act upon allowing purchasing department to donate or dispose of unsold auction items.
I included a list of the unsold items. Uh, one thing that I'd like to do, what that, you gave your commission, is any of the metal that we have, I'd like to bring it up to, uh, sort of, the, the, and sell it, and give them on back.
I think that's an excellent idea, okay? Uh, it's always good. And then, Chris, I know before we actually disposed of these, um.
We tried to, a diagram, give it away, throw it away.
Okay. I know normally, we'll see an email to all the nonprofits and cities, and we've got this equipment, you want this?
Yep.
Okay.
But on your list, what is the third one down? What is that?
Rotations.
What is it?
It's a rotations, it's a.
Like, is it chemical, say?
It says, chemical.
Is that spelled right, or is that just me?
I think it's spelled right.
Point taken, okay.
I make a motion that we approve allowing purchasing to donate or dispense of unsold, um, auction items and to, um, take any items for recycling.
Sir.
I have a motion, and a second on favor of the judge. Number seventeen, request for qualification, one one eight eight dash one nine, four five seven plan advisor, to consider an act upon a warning, our like Q number one one eight nine dash one nine, four five seven plan advisor, to the highest qualified respondent, David, about the bid.
Actually, I had six vendors, um, send in qualifications. On October second, the committee met, um, we kind of nailed, narrowed it down to two, two members or two vendors, one being Amerillo National Bank, the other one being Northwestern Mutual. On, uh, October ninth, we brought them both in and did an interview process, thirty minutes for each. Um, after the interview process, uh, it came to be a two-two split, two for Northwestern Mutual, two for Amerillo National. So, it kinda came down to me and some non-organ members, which was Ed Fowler, and also Jackson Lattner. Um, we all went for Amerillo National Bank, means that they charged less. Uh, they didn't charge for, um, the plan documents. And also, being a little bit more known for our employees, uh, Amerillo National Bank was better.
And that they had eight customer service reps versus one.
Yes, that was another big one.
I, I sat on this committee, um, Captain, did we, this was a great Captain Coffee, sat on this as well. And I think this was an agenda item that was facilitated, you know, at the time. So, we actually saw this, and a lot of questions about who is our five-seven, or four-five-seven advisor even today. So, I think as we transition, we definitely need to do some employee education around what is this? That we offer this, uh, because we are a municipality, not everybody can offer this type of, of plan. So, I think we need to educate our employees around even offering this too. Um, I make a motion to approve our Q one one eight eight dash one nine, four five seven advisor to Amerillo National Bank as recommended by the committee.
Thank you.
I have a motion, and a second on favor of the judge. Number eighteen, intention of receiving boiler repair, to consider an act upon the pricing of the boiler vent pipe in the T C seven, or to be performed by Allen Prime State Campaign, total repair of fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
One thirty-four. Fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-four.
One thirty-four. So, for damage, is there, was there an accident, is this a replacement, who has background in this?
Do not need background. Package is live, uh, there was a mechanical failure of one or two parts. It was described to be as explosion. Wasn't exactly an explosion, but kind of more of an over-pressed situation. It's damaged in that pipe. And, uh, we managed to have it repaired, and then we inspected it, approved it, that appeared, although it was tempered. And we're expecting some equipment to be repaired properly for the next inspection. We just put this off until a new budget we're considering, other expenses involved, things that are involved.
Let's do a, a replacement of the boiler vent pipe. And what we're talking about, Allen Prime State Campaign, to repair it, in my, fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Thanks.
I have a motion, and a second on favor of the judge. Number nineteen, employment items, uh, road and bridge department, a gentleman of King and I view, that's right, that's right. Replacement for seven, and we're waiting for section of thirty twenty nineteen.
Thank you, multiple.
Sure.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second on favor of the judge. Our ten projects.
Maybe not for this quarter, but it would probably be good, um, every couple of court sessions to get it up the, on the district court project, um, for those of us that don't serve on the committee, um, because we are getting closer to that, so that might just be something for next time.
Thank you. Number twenty-one, jail report, we have five hundred forty-nine people in our jail. Eighty-five of those are female, they are, in our jail, not on the, eighty-five percent are felonies, eight percent are innocent.
We did, there was a, uh, Max Bell pushing, um, on I forty, and one of the deputies was out, and a door was open, and the door got hit.
Said that he was okay?
Deputy's fine.
He's very lucky.
Very, very lucky.
Okay.
No, it was on Aaronon exit.
Hard on.
Hard on.
Wait, he's still there, hard time.
I think Aaronon.
You're doing great.
Aaronon.
Yeah, ours.
I, I, I.
Since I do, the person who hit the vehicle was.
She's a very.
You can talk to me.
Yes. I hope she spent some time in our jail.
She did.
I have everyone's executive session. Um, there, agenda items for next time.
Uh, a couple things, Judge, Commissioner Bond, our third party, um, is looking at our defend.
Sixth Amendment of the Indian Defense.
Yes, the Indian Defense, um, will we get that report soon?
You should have, what we, we'll do is make sure that that's going to all court.
Right. Okay, because I think it's a big report, so. To make sure we have time to read it and pre-adjust it, okay. And then, Judge, I got a reminder from the Frazel District about our appointee, I'm assuming that'll be on next time?
I'm waiting for someone to give us a, uh, please. Do we need, how many do we need? One, two, three, one, and all. I see in the papers that the city applies on the draft, so they still have you on there.
And then, do we still need to be looking for tiers one? I know you brought that up, Commissioner Church, so we got that on the agenda next time.
You getting it? Tiers one. Do you want the end of just the heads, update two?
I don't think so, I think Commissioner Bond, that he's just gonna pass along the report to the committees, we may not, I don't, I don't wanna speak for you, Commissioner Bond, we may not be ready for an agenda.
Yeah, what we've done, we've, uh, addressed our reply letter, including to the Sixth Amendment from our previous meeting, we just said last week, and we agreed with the President and Principal with the, uh, report, or he asked some suggestions, and I said, so we sent back to the, uh, Sixth Amendment for all our requests and options that he was proposing, so, uh, we'll get the report to you, pre-adjusted, and at a time, uh, we'll, uh, I, I, what I would like to do is have a big, uh, report.
That is all, we, all of the agenda, we're trying to progress.